Mike, I got seven o'clock in case you... I got 58, but if you got seven o'clock, let's get ourselves started here. Okay, well, good evening tonight. We'll open up the zoning board of appeals. We have one item on the on the agenda for tonight. I'll go over a few things as we start the meeting. Number one... Number one, we will open the meeting. On the second piece of the meeting, we will do a pledge of the allegiance. Second thing is that we will address the requested. I've got some explaining to do as we go through this. And we get to the second one, then we've got one thing to do on our on our agenda. And I will read the request into the meeting minutes, and then we can talk about it from there. If nobody has any problems, then we'll stand up, do a pledge of the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. All right. At our meeting, we have the meeting minutes from the last meeting have been passed out to us. What I'd like to know is ask the third corrections. We'll note them as necessary, or if there are no corrections and someone's willing to put forth a motion that we approve them as written, we'll take that. But I will open that up to the board right now.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the town.
We have a motion on the table to approve them. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
All right. Second or third or fourth thing we've got here. And this is going to be me doing some explanation. We approved the minutes. We will discuss the request. All right. What I want to do is I'm going to put forth here a policy. If I have to have it approved by the board or the village board, I will do that. But I'll tell you what it is. And this is the chair making this request, and that means that it's me. And the chair is publicly asking that all comments, whether for or against the request, before the board be done with the positive that they be done in a positive and professional manner. And that's what I'm asking happen here. Personally negative comments or personal negative comments aimed at someone or aimed at the person making a presentation will not be tolerated by this chair. If they happen, this chair will adjourn this meeting, and we will take this meeting offline, and we will come back within seven days to have a meeting, and we will do it at that point probably closed. I will take this to the board, and I will ask for permission to do this. And what this comes from, I'll tell you right up front, said there were comments at a previous meeting. I didn't like the comments. I want things to be professional. Here, we can hear just about anything if somebody doesn't like something. You know, say, I don't like it. Here's why. But we're going to keep it that way. And if we don't keep it that way, as I said, I will adjourn this meeting, and that only takes one vote. I don't need to have that seconded. So this is all on me right now. That's the way I'm taking it. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? And I'm not going to take many. Okay, very good. All right. And as I said, what I will do, I will adjourn the meeting. I will go to the village board. I will ask them to give me that permission, and we will put into into the meeting minutes and into the code here that I have that authority. And by the way, that authority is not to make a decision yes or no that we do anything. That authority is to adjourn the meeting at that point and bring it back. All right, we've also been provided with some meeting minutes. Well, not meeting minutes. These are actually the codes that are coming forth or in our book. Thank you very much for doing this. We've talked about it a few times. If you've got them, put them in your book. Throw out what you took out or give it... I don't know. Do they have to give it back to you?
No.
All right, tear it up and throw it out. Keep these in there. It will be a good decision. And before we start with our with our one item, and then I will get into reading it. It's pretty straightforward. There are some things on our desk sent forth training or potential training that will take place for members of the board. Remember, we all have to have eight hours a year? Four hours a year? All right, thank you. We all got to have four hours a year. And if you get an opportunity, take it during the course of the year. Because if you don't do it that year, what will happen is you'll end up with double the next year. And there's also just the good things that take place in these. All right, having said all of that, we have one item in front of the board here. We've taken care of the dispersment of village code books. We've reviewed the minutes. So, Jason Daniel Hall, owners of 81 Curcher Park, tax ID. Is this as listed in the meeting minutes? Not going to read that. The application to extend the driveway to provide more than one car width driveway to a two-car width driveway. Current zoning allows for a one-car width driveway. Set driveway shall extend from the street to the garage or to an area on which the conforming new garage shall be built, but it's at a different date. And we actually don't know what that garage will be here. I'm assuming it will be a two-car garage, but if that's unlisted here. All right, pursuant to section 175.3 and 175.53H, the applicant seeks relief from the current zoning in the form of two area variances. One, the area variance for the location of proposed driveway shall be closer than three feet from the sidewalk line. That is the requirement. That's going to, if they build this driveway, it's going to go over closer. Understand that. The relief is two feet or less. I guess it's going one foot to the... Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, it's going one foot to the property line. And this would be, and you're going to have to help me here. I looked at the diagram, on the south side of the property?
Correct.
Okay, so it's on this side up. All right. And then the secondary variance is to allow the driveway to extend further than 36 feet from the road. I have to admit, the variance requested of approximately 27 feet, I have to admit, I didn't completely understand that. I mean, I think I knew what was happening here, but I didn't completely understand the area variance to allow the driveway to extend further than 36 feet from the road. Would that be to go up to the garage?
So currently, I guess maybe the garage, the garage was built 1920 when the house was, I'm assuming.
Right, I got that part.
It wasn't there when we built, but it's a cinder block garage.
Yes, it is.
And a bomb or something like that. It's very thick, heavy, you know, cinder blocks. And so currently, whenever it was built, it's 65 feet from the curb.
Just behind the house, right?
Yeah, it's beyond the house, behind it, kind of curls back a little bit. So I guess currently, it's not even up to code with the current policies because it's over 36 already. So what we're looking to do is just from where it is right now, where the driveway meets the garage, is just to go over another 11 feet or 10, 10 and a half feet, and then just it goes to the road.
So just from my, just from my understanding, and I think I got this, is we're not moving the garage. We're keeping the garage exactly where it is.
Correct, yeah.
You're requesting for a double width driveway or an extra 12 feet, I think?
Yeah, 10 and a half, so.
10, okay. That may be, I'll take your word for whatever it is. And you're asking that, and this is the part that I don't think I understood. You're asking for that to come straight back, all the way back to the road?
Yeah, so where the garage is currently, it's just going to go over 10 and a half feet and then out to the road.
So the curb cut in the road?
Yeah, the curb would have to be cut to accommodate the two-car driver because right now it's a one.
Okay. And does the code allow that? The code will stop it at seven or 10 feet from the road itself, and then cause it to go on a diagonal over to the regular driveway. Now, if you have a two-car garage, you're allowed 24 feet.
Right, all the way to the road.
Right, yes.
Wait, can I jump in there right now?
Yes, please.
All right. This... I am bamboozled here. I'm looking at the definition of a driveway. A driveway says, on properties where there is no garage or no, if you have a conforming garage, no more than 12 feet on properties where there is no garage, or 12 feet wide for each garage stall, up to a total of 36 feet. Does that say you can have a driveway that's 36 feet wide?
Long. I read it as 36 feet long.
Where does it say length? It says 12 feet wide for each garage stall.
So if you have two-stalled garage, you can have 24.
If you've got three, you've got 36.
Right.
So a driveway can be 36 feet wide? Okay, that has... This does not say one word about length. The length is already there. You're not going to shorten it. You're not adding 36 feet.
No, we're not.
So there is no requirement for a variance related anywhere, anyway, to 36 feet.
Yes, there is. If you go into, I don't even have my glasses or my code, but in there, right?
I think it's 173...
53E.
E or H?
H, I think, yeah, H. That's where it says that you can have, if you don't have a garage. Basically, if you don't have a garage, if you only have one car garage, you can still go pave a second car garage, but it has to be 36 feet from the garage and then tapered type of thing.
All right, but his intention is to ultimately have a two-car garage.
Right.
So he would, two stalls, he would be allowed to have a driveway
All the way to the road.
24 feet wide.
Right.
But he doesn't have 24 feet to work with.
Right, he doesn't have a two-car garage right now.
Not yet.
Correct.
And we understand he's trying to get one.
Which is another issue, because are you going to build the two-car garage 10 feet off the property line behind the house? Or do you want to build the garage all the way to the property line?
It would probably be a foot from the property line, so it will probably affect...
It's going to be exactly the same place as the driveway.
Yeah, that's where the driveway ends and where we want a parked car.
So you would need a total variance for the construction of a new two-car garage?
Yes.
But that's not even part of this request?
No, because we're going to do that next year or a year and a half.
Okay.
So he's going to come back for that?
Right, so you're assuming that if we gave you the two-car driveway now, you're assuming you would get the two-car variance to be one foot off the property line?
It's an assumption, but I guess if it didn't get approved, I would still take the two-car driveway since we have two vehicles, and it's really a pain to move each car in and out and, you know.
No, I've got it, I've got it.
And even...
See, then, when I was reading this, I said, you know, thank you for the information, but sometimes you've got to be careful because you give too much information. And then that raised a red flag to me because there is no guarantee that you would get a variance to build another, a two-car garage in the future in line with your almost two-car wide driveway.
And even if we didn't get that approval by our code, he's still allowed to have two-car wide, just not all the way to the road. He could come out 36 feet by 12 feet.
Oh, so it's got to be...
No taper.
It says somewhere in there. I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's in there. It's about an acre.
Okay.
Trust me, there's codes all over the place that are together in there.
All right, so you could literally keep the 12-foot or whatever the existing cut at the driveway, and then just flare it out. And then you wouldn't need the curb cut.
Correct.
Right, and then the assumption is you'd have your two-car garage in the future. The assumption would be you get the variance to build it one foot off the property line. Right, that's ultimately what we're looking for here.
And I understand that right. At that point, the straight cut to the road would be allowable because there's a two-car garage, so you would have a 24-foot driveway the entire length of the driveway.
Yes.
You wouldn't have the angle cut.
Right, but in order to avoid the curb cut, he said, you know, I got to keep the curb cut at 12 and just to get off the road and then swoop it out.
And we're trying to, you know, be economical with this, and if we're going to do the driveway now, we don't want to spend more money, dig it up and do it again in the future. Already, it's $7,000 that we got quoted just to do the extension all the way to the road. To dig that brand new up and then to re-put it back down would be more money to...
With the curb cut?
Well, we're hoping to get the curb cut now, and then, you know, not have to spend, you know, to get it cut later on if we need it.
Right, but you could do this without a curb cut?
Oh, you could, but it's more, you know, convenient to have, you know, the double all the way to the road.
But there again, the assumption is that you're going to get a variance for the construction of a two-car garage in the future one foot off the property line. Now, I look at the property. Normally, under any other circumstance, there'd be no way they would get a variance one foot off the property line. Your saving grace is the fact that there's public walkway into what's down there.
Well, that's one way to look at it. It's a saving grace for that. But the hordes of people that come with their pets and noises and animals and stuff like that is the big inconvenience for us. But in this case, you're correct that it is nice for, that it's not another property or the sidewalk is very far away, and there's, you know, electric lines that they couldn't dig and put something there regardless.
So that is used a lot as a...
Well, the Solory Court complex a few years ago brought in, I mean, that's where everybody comes. Hordes of people every day with their animals and pets, and the privacy really went down. We had a forest and nothing on the property. You know, I've been there 20 years, so it's something recent that's, you know, again, it's already in there. It's not going anywhere and all that. Yeah, very, the traffic and then the inconvenience of privacy that's not what we went down to, so. In this particular case, you're correct. It does work in our favor that it's not anything.
Right, it's not, it's not another residential plot.
Correct.
However, that is a dedicated easement to the village, correct? Is there going to be any legal implications for him to go into within full of the easement?
Jake and I already talked about it, and neither one of us have an issue with it, nor do we see any issue with it.
Okay.
And all the sidewalks were literally just replaced down there, so this is perfect timing to do driveway.
We were holding off until it was done. And I apologize. Should we be standing for this or?
Yeah, we didn't quite finish.
Yeah, we typically do, but don't worry about that. We all know who's talking. At 53H says parking is prohibited in the front side or rear yard if any lot improvement with a building containing one to six dwellings, except that parking is permitted on a driveway serving the property. No driveway is permitted in the portion of the front yard between the planes. Any of that going to happen here?
I'm sorry, a driveway in front of the house?
Is it coming over in front of the house?
No, the driveway that's at the end, we're just going to pave that, and then it's just going to move over.
You're going to the south side?
To the south side, yeah.
Just as long as I understand that, okay. And it said, no driveway shall be placed closer than three feet from the property line. That's what we want to extend. You want to go over to one foot within the property line.
Correct.
So what we have before us is we have two, a request for two variances. So if I knew where your garage was going to be built, you could get away without any variances? If you were going to take that garage that you have now down, and you were going to use the southern border of that and build the garage, take a two-car garage farther north to the north instead of going to the line, there's no variances that you need at all to do this? In your thought process, and I know you haven't done this yet, are you going to go farther to the north to extend it?
No, because we already have a concrete patio. That's right there. That's and the current cinder block garage does come up to the north side from the garage already about four feet. And there's only another four feet until it hits a concrete patio right there. So we're not looking to, you know, we're looking to have more space outdoors for the kids and grass and all that, and, you know. So we're not going north. We want to go south just to keep the space in the backyard. And kind of use the space that we do have on the south side, which isn't being used, basically just for pets and stuff from Solory Court to use, so.
Is the thought process to build the two-car garage?
What's that?
Is the thought process, and I know you're not there yet, but is it to build the two-car garage?
Correct, yeah, that's our, that's our plan within the next year and a half. But well, we have the $7,000 now to do the driveway, but not the $20,000 to do a garage. So we're doing what we can now, and then a year and a half, two years, we'll apply for, to get a new garage. Like I said, the garage is a cinder block garage from the 20s. It's very dilapidated. I don't want to put any money into it to tear it off and build onto something that's crumbling. So we painted it best we could to make it look nice until we could save up the $20,000 to knock it down and to put up a two-car. But again, we have a single-family house with, you know, me and my wife and our two kids, you know, 1,500 square feet. But we have two cars, so it would be nice to have a two-car driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not renters, you know, we're not renters or anything like that. I've been there 20 years, you know, I own the house, so.
I somewhat feel your pain, but everyone in the village has a one-car, one driveway.
Well, it's nice that we have the space, though, that they may not have, like you said, because of the sidewalk that they have there, so.
Go state, then. Other questions or thoughts here? All right, I'm going to see if anybody in the general public, I always give the general public an opportunity to speak for or not for the property, or give us their thoughts.
A good idea.
Very good, good. So there's no public comments, all right. So I'm going to close that portion out. That doesn't mean the village board can't talk more. I see two and help me here if I've got this right. I see two variances. Number one is to go move the driveway farther to the south within one foot of the property line. Okay, so that's going to, that's going to encroach on what you can be there. So that's one variance. The second variance is, and I'm going to add some words here. Tell me if I've got this wrong, and I have no problem with that. The second thought process is that will allow you, I'll back this up a little bit, that's going to allow you essentially 24-footed driveway. Okay, and then, when you do that, because at some point you're thinking that you're going to build this two-car garage back there, you'd like to run that right straight to the road along the one side so that you don't have the additional cost of taking away the angle in that you will have at the end of it, or have to have somebody build into it again, or be stuck with just a 12-foot cut in the curb.
Correct.
That's also, so the thought process is do it now, and then you don't have to deal with that part in the next project.
Yeah, correct. The security would probably have to be dug up and re-put down just so it's all uniform. So we're looking to save, you know, some money now instead of later having to dig it up again.
Understood. Any questions or thoughts from anybody?
Well, I guess I'm a little bit uncomfortable of assuming the garage would be built. I'm sure it will be built, but to give permission now, and it's not there yet, I think we should wait on that part. I don't know how to say that.
Okay.
Prefer we all curb before we move.
Curb cut, right. That's just my thought.
Other thoughts or comments from anyone on the board? All right, here's what I would recommend. I'm going to recommend we deal with this two different ways. Number one, I'm going to say we deal with the first variance and extend the driveway to within one foot of the property line. That's an end of subject right there, because that fits the code. And what you do after that, that's it. That would be one. Then the second one is decide whether or how you want to deal with the 36-inch variance, 36-foot or 27, whatever it is the statement is, to make it go straight out to the road. That would be a second one. Thoughts or comments? Everybody understand that?
No, I don't understand. It's a 36-inch.
Uh, okay.
It's not to do with anything. It's already 65 feet long.
Because the code, the code says
It does.
You can, you can have a one-car driveway all the way road to garage.
Yeah.
Code currently states, he's already allowed to put a second car, a second driveway in to fit a second car, but it can only be 36 feet from draw manager area line, where the garage would be out 36 feet. So he can already have that. He doesn't even need your guys' permission for that.
The code is... It refers to that as an apron.
What's he ask?
They refer to that as an apron. That's why it's only 36.
Right, so he just wants to extend it from where he's already allowed, that 36 feet out from the garage, to the road. He wants that distance.
Hey, Aaron, do you have a, I could mark it on the whiteboard if you want to show.
I'm not getting this.
He's allowed, he's allowed. So we have a...
He's allowed to do this down to 36 feet, wherever it says. So he's going to have his driveway like this. So he needs the variance to do this part.
Ah.
That's it.
See, I'm a bitch.
That's exactly what he's got. So even if the garage doesn't happen, he's still allowed a second driveway, but only 36 feet out. So he's still allowed it no matter what, but he just, so he just wants to go further.
That makes sense, stand to the road.
Good now, I got it. All right, you ready to go?
Let's deal first with the first one, which is the one-foot variance.
No, we...
Type two.
We would have gotten there, okay.
All right, I would like to make a motion that this request is considered a type-two action with regard to seeker with no significant environmental impact.
I agree. I may have a second.
Okay, the motion is on the floor and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Not. Seeker is taken care of. Not, seeker is taken care of, that's a regulatory issue that we have to deal with. Okay. Now we will go back to the two points. Number one is extend the driveway to within one foot of the property line, to the south.
Okay, I will make that motion for a positive recommendation for a area variance to increase the driveway width to approximately twenty-two feet, whatever it is, you can think, terminating one foot off the south property line, and extending from the existing garage thirty-six feet out?
Well, that's, that's the second variant, so just deal with that.
All right.
First one is just taken within one foot of the property line.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the table to extend the variance to move within one foot of the property line to the south for the extended driveway. How's that going to be? We have it seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Excuse me, Alan is opposed. Very good. Okay, that motion is passed, it's four to one. Okay, now, second issue on the table is to extend this driveway all the way to the road, and I'll, I'll set aside all the terminology that exists within the driveway and the parking code, but it's essentially to bring it right straight all the way down to the road, and have a cut in the curb, which will be something that the, the requester will pay for. If you, if you grant that, it stays at the same width from the garage all the way back to the road. If you don't grant that, there's a certain feet away from the road where it has to take an angle, come back over to the original twelve feet, and come out to the road on And by the way, if the garage is ever built, and it looks like it will be, but it's proposed to be at some point in the future, that line will come straight to the road, the entire length of the driveway. So is anybody going to make that motion?
I will make that motion for a positive recommendation to extend the driveway length and the twenty-two width, plus minus whatever it is, to extend all the way to Kircher Park, one foot off the south property line, including a curb cut on Kircher Park.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to, to grant that variance, to come all the way down the property line, and the extended length of the driveway from the garage all the way to the road, there will be no cut-in, or the, the variance is to eliminate the cut-in and take it right straight to the road. Do I have a second motion on that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion on the table and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Two opposed, both of them granted. We'll have many minutes, but that will state, take you to one foot within the property line, and then extend it right straight down to the road. It doesn't deal with moving your garage closer to the property line.
Correct, and we'll come back and do the process.
If you ever do that, yeah.
When you're ready, just come see me for the permit, just as long as it's not tomorrow. Oh, yeah. Good luck on your surgery. Thank you, I appreciate it.
That's going to be tomorrow.
All right, do we have anything on our meeting for July, June?
Not yet.
Nothing yet.
I think there's talk. There's talk, but there's nothing yet, just to remind you of a conversation you and I had, you're going to put into the village board alternates.
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanted to bring that up here or not, so I just wanted to remind you.
Well, just to let you know, if any of us happen to be absent for that meeting coming up in the summer, whatever those meetings are here on this board, we would normally have one or two alternates that we would pull in for that meeting, so that we kept five. Right now, there are no alternates. So what I am going to do is I'm going to take forward to the village trustees that they should probably consider, I don't know if they have to do this, but it certainly makes sense, that they have an alternate or two that can be pulled on if we ever have someone absent or extended during the time or other.
And I'll, and I'll put on record the reason, one reason that that's extremely important is, because if you need a supermajority, and you don't have the right amount of members here, then it couldn't happen, basically.
Why do we need a supermajority?
Oh, don't ask me that, I was hoping you weren't going to ask. I mean, there's certain cases to where you would need everybody to, you know. Don't ask me exactly, I just know that.
The chair would say, you know, there's not a majority tonight, and if you want
to postpone the meeting because of that reason.
Right.
I mean, that's not ideal.
Right, see, just from my thought, I'll tell you where my thought process is, if we've got three people here, and we had three votes affirmative, that would be the same approval.
Well, that's, that's just a normal majority, but there's, we can, it is offline, offline, but there's the term supermajority under New York State code that three, it's not just the three.
Okay. All right, so anyhow, we are, we are going to do that, and see what they come up with, and that's, that certainly makes sense. I would make a recommendation, if you've got those inserts for your book, go ahead and make them. Otherwise, I have nothing else, we have nothing currently on the agenda for June. If nobody has anything else, we can, in thirty-five exact minutes, we can have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, very good.
Joe, that'd be June.